Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Village Nuclear's Board meeting to order. Uh, Kelsey, would you do the roll call, please?
Sure. Michael Bell?
Present.
Henry Janisch? Henry Janisch? Peggy Cruz? Tammy Newberry?
Present.
Chuck Phillipsen?
Yep.
Roger Trutman?
Sure. Okay, we've got, uh, five members. Henry isn't on yet, okay? Okay, uh, item two, I look for an approval of the agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll move to approve the agenda.
I'll second, Peggy.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens' comments. Uh, items not listed on this agenda, no debate will occur with the board. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will refer to the proper staff or committee if action is required. And if anybody would like to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item four, approval of the consent agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'm Michael Bell, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item five, public works, public safety, committee chairperson report, Peggy?
Yes, um, we had a meeting two days ago, it was longer than I'm sure we all anticipated. Um, we had some discussion on some cost-saving measures. First, we approved some licensures and permits, and then we had a discussion about the squad car replacement schedule, and I'm sure that we'll get into that with the village board at this, uh, in a very, um, in a very timely fashion, and Bert and Jeff are going to do some number of investigations for us and as well as Drake, so we'll get some data on that before we pursue that further. We also looked at some cost-saving measures for not this year, but starting the following for spring bulk cleanup day, and we are on track for getting some information on that before we move forward. And then our final, uh, discussion point was, uh, the special assessment ordinance, and that went on for quite a while about, uh, special assessments, um, for the Ninth Avenue project and one individual who has already has Kermit Gutter, so we went on to discuss that further, and I'm sure that will be on, uh, shortly. So those were the topics for consideration to, uh, for discussion, I should say. And that's it.
Okay, Peggy, thank you. Item six, finance and personnel, consideration, discussion, resolution twenty-two dash zero five, approving wage for utility office manager. Drake?
Uh, the village board has historically viewed the deputy clerk treasurer position in the utility office manager as equivalent in levels of responsibility and corresponding compensation. Uh, the village recently appointed a new deputy clerk treasurer at a wage of twenty-four dollars per hour. Uh, the attached resolution would adjust the utility offices, office managers' wage to twenty-four dollars an hour to maintain internal equity. Uh, this does not have an impact on the twenty-twenty-two village budget and is entirely funded, uh, by utility funds spread out across all four utilities. Um, the finance and personnel committee met earlier this evening and recommend approval.
This is Tammy, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'm Michael Bell, second.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, new business, uh, presentation, Nuclear's public water system.
Uh, Brian, uh, Berkwhist from Town and Country, our engineer, uh, for water-related matters, uh, will start out with a presentation.
Hey, Drake. Uh, as Drake mentioned, uh, my name's Brian Berkwhist, I think I introduced myself to everybody, but just to beat it to death. Um, I'm the president of Town and Country Engineering, and with me tonight is Nick Boobles, uh, who helps out with some of the project work here in Nuclearis. Uh, what I was hoping to do this evening is, uh, probably a little bit of a rehash for folks that uh, were at the last two, two meetings. Uh, but just to make sure people that either had to leave early or weren't able to attend, uh, or other general members of the public, uh, that are interested. Uh, I wanted to give everybody a bit of a little history of the water utility, the infrastructure that you have. Sort of the last twenty years, things that have happened and where we are today, leading up to some of the immediately following agenda items relative to both the school and potentially a new, uh, new reservoir. And certainly take any questions that, that may come up. So I'm going to, uh, share my screen here. I have a, uh, a map, but also some of the items that are in your packet, so, uh, if you're keeping score at home, what we're looking at right now, uh, is a, a, a map of the village, of course. The things I wanted to point out are your wells, first of all. The, uh, well one, excuse me. Well one is at Village Hall. Well two is down off of Twelfth Avenue. You can circle some of these for everybody. Well two off of Twelfth Avenue, and well three up by the, the shop. Those provide all of your drinking water sources, uh, they, together they get you close to eight-hundred-and-ninety gallons a minute if they're all running. Uh, some of the things we're gonna talk about a little bit later are your firm capacity, so at any given moment, uh, in addition to obviously a calamity where a well actually just breaks, uh, regular maintenance is, is encouraged at the wells, and usually maintenance can involve up to, you know, two months of cleaning the well, rehabbing the well. So when we look at a whole system, how to design a whole system to be resilient enough to handle everything that a community can throw at it, we use what's called firm well capacity, and that would be making sure you've got enough water production that you can live for several months without your best well, your highest producer, uh, which for you is well two, at just over three-hundred-and-fifty gallons a minute. Uh, you also have storage, of course, uh, the elevated tank up at, on the hilltop on the west side. Uh, immediately next to that is the booster station, that's an at-grade and below-grade room that has some pumps in it that boost the pressure in order to serve this boosted zone at the top of the hill. Uh, those homes are too high to be served with enough pressure via gravity alone. So those folks are boosted. Uh, the need for boosting is, is purely a function of elevation relative to the storage tank. The pink and green lines that outline and trace some of the hilltops uh, represent the, the rough range of elevations by which water pressures get either too low for what a, a normal customer would expect, or so low that they don't meet DNR standards and require boosting. So you can see, uh, on the west side, there's a region on that hilltop that's just too high. Uh, you have two other hilltops, the northwest region that is undeveloped, and then the east valley, I mean, uh, top of the east valley, also undeveloped, uh, for the same reason, uh, that hilltop is too high to provide water service without a booster. I, by way of history, uh, the village has generally been confined to these lower-level elevations other than for the boosted zone for a, a number of decades, uh, many decades, actually. The village has received some development pressure and inquiry in the past, uh, specifically on two, two different sites. Uh, here on the west was a proposed subdivision known as New Chatel. Uh, over on the east is our future phases of the Valtell subdivision. Uh, both of those had gotten fairly close to fruition back in the two-thousand-and-seven timeframe, six, seven, eight timeframe, before the economics of what everyone was going through simply fell apart. Uh, at that time, on the west side, New Chatel had gone down the road of either upgrading and upsizing your existing booster station to serve a new homes, or building their own booster station that could provide enough pumping for their proposed new homes. Uh, that development fell apart, of course, on the east side. That area had planned on constructing its own booster with the caveat that DNR requires a new elevated storage tank once you hit fifty-one homes uh, in order to provide water to the boosting pumps in case, uh, there's a power failure. Because this site is slated for a couple hundred homes, uh, there was a need for a, a tank over on this site as well, and that, of course, fell through and, uh, time moved on. During that rough timeframe, two thousand and three, two thousand and four, uh, the village had been keeping an eye on its storage condition and had engaged a study to look at how much water storage the community had and found that you were at, and sometimes crossing over several evaluation measures that would indicate a community should start planning on, at least looking at a new reservoir. So, uh, an impact fee was created in oh-four to start, uh, trying to collect some funds. At some point, uh, you'd have enough funds slash enough development on the horizon that it would make sense to construct a new reservoir. Clearly, um, we're here in twenty-twenty-two, and there just hasn't been the right combination of those things. So, uh, where we're at today is, uh, we have begun and are nearing the finish line of a modernization of that water needs assessment. Sort of modernizing that two-thousand-and-three, two-thousand-and-four effort so that the village can update its impact fee, uh, through its financial consultants. Uh, the effort of twenty-twenty-two uh, was brought to the forefront again because of another proposed development, in this case, uh, the school here on, on the west side. And that's where I'll dive into kind of the study that we've been working on and what our, uh, our anticipated recommendations are. Before I, uh, get into that, I'll take a quick timeout here, see if anybody had any particularly comments or questions on some of the the background.
Uh, Brian, I have a couple of questions, this is Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Just, just for clarification, um, do we know what the condition of the, uh, storage tank up in Tower Heights is the current condition, is it?
Uh, it's, it's in very serviceable shape, uh, water tanks tend to last quite a while, uh, particularly as long as they're, they're painted, you have a steel tank, I should back up, you have a steel tank, as long as steel tanks are painted, uh, and corrosion is kept in check, uh, they last for quite some time. Uh, I, I can't recall when your last inspection was, DNR requires an inspection every five years. Um, but the last, the last one did come through fine, uh, there's no, uh, no anticipated need to do any real major work there other than keeping up with the paint.
Okay, um, could you, you mentioned the term reservoir several times, what, what actually is a reservoir?
Sure, the, uh, the reservoir in the, in the engineering world is, is anything that stores a lot of water. There are several types uh, and several different materials that are used to make those, so you have a ground-mounted tank. Excuse me, about, uh, three-hundred-thousand gallons total can be stored in that tank. The, uh, the founders, I suppose, of the utility took advantage of the topography. A, a ground-mounted tank is quite a bit less cost than a, what we call a ball on a stick, which you may see in other communities that don't have the, have the, the valleys to take advantage of. So, um, you, you'll see ground-mounted tanks, you'll see, uh, balls on sticks elevated, or excuse me, uh, spheroid tanks, sometimes you'll see ones that look a little bit more like a big silo. Uh, those are called stand pipes, that is just a, a uniform diameter all the way to the top. And then lastly, we have, uh, subterranean tanks, uh, communities, uh, sometimes have taken advantage of, of just low areas on ridges or low areas where they, they need to pump. Uh, well, it's just, again, a low-cost option to putting it on a elevated steel stick, sticking up in the air. So generally, you're gonna be looking for stuff in hundreds of thousands of gallons. Uh, I'll get into a little bit, uh, why it's important to have such a big amount of storage. But it, it's gonna be a big, big, reservoir is a big, big storage tank, either ground-mounted or hanging in the air.
So, you said ball on a stick, that's what we have in Tower Heights?
Uh, no, uh, that would, that's actually a, uh, 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 just a tank, tank on the ground.
That's a ground mounted?
Oh, excuse me, yes, I'm sorry, yes. Yes.
Okay, and that's, is that our only ground-mounted tank?
Yes, that is your only reservoir in the system and has been for many, many, many years.
Okay, okay, so, uh, we have one reservoir, um, you mentioned, uh, of the fifty-one unit, uh, threshold in, uh, Valtell.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, does that include what's there now, or is that new development in the second phase?
It would be just homes that are above these, I'm not sure if you can see these or not, but, uh, just homes that are above those contour lines, the pink and green contours, so none of the current homes require any boosting whatsoever. Uh, they are below the critical elevation, so that fifty-first home would be the fifty-first home above the elevation that's in pink and, and green here.
So we're, we're, we're considering fifty, fifty units of development within that pink line?
Fifty units could be-
Fifty-one would come in in the next phase.
The fifty-first.
Fifty-first would come in in the next phase, right?
Generally, that's how a developer would handle it, the, uh, the kicker here, uh, for Valtell is they have used up all the land that can, that can be served by your existing system because the booster that you have, the booster station that you have does not have plumbing to get it to the other side of the valley, which is typical, that's how booster stations are almost always constructed. So Valtell would actually need its own booster station, a booster, a booster pump station to build house number one in these elevated zones, and they would then also-
So what about, what about, what about, um, the potential proposed second phase of the Prairie House project, uh, another forty, another forty units of housing, um, across Elmer Road from Valtell, adjacent to the current Prairie House, you, you're familiar with Prairie House, right?
A, a little bit, but, uh, because it, because that'd be across Elmer Road, that would be in, in these lower elevations, so they would not need any boosting, and that's, that's one, uh, one thing that the school has, has adjusted on their site plan, is they slid the school further down the hill, also to avoid the need for boosting the water pressure with pumps.
Okay, so our, our current capacity could handle that?
Uh, your current elevations can handle it, uh, we're gonna get into, uh, my next spiel, next part of the spiel here is, is reservoir capacity is, is at a, uh, at a tipping point, uh, from our perspective.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Sorry, Chuck.
No.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry.
You go, Tammy.
So I'm just saying, for clarification, the booster stations and the reservoirs are two different things, right?
Absolutely, yes, yes, and I should-
Okay.
I'm sorry. I should, I should be very clear, uh, where, uh, your current system, in any system, uh, it's got several different legs of the stool that make for a water system that both serves your current needs and has sufficient capacity to accommodate all the anticipated needs in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. Uh, that's related to water production, you know, in your drinking water wells, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. Uh, some communities have, have water needs and fewer wells, so that they're in a water production problem, uh, where they need more wells because they need to make more gallons of water per minute. Uh, other communities, Nuclearis, uh, has, has enough water production, but because the wells only can pump at about three-hundred gallons a minute on average, um, and a uh, a large fire can generally require fifteen-hundred, two-thousand gallons a minute to fight it. Uh, your pumps on your wells cannot keep up, uh, particularly, you know, amplified if one of your wells is out of service during a fire event, and that's where, uh, one function of a reservoir kicks in is that water's just waiting there, ready to be used in a fire event. Uh, we'll talk a little bit about other, other reasons to have a reservoir in a minute. Uh, and then the last is just physical topography. So some communities, and Evansville's getting closer, excuse me, Nuclearis is getting close to that, uh, because you're sort of running out of developable land in those low elevations. Uh, so those are some of the, the three things that you'd wanna look at in deter, answering the question, is our wa, do we have enough water for our community? But there are definitely three, Tammy, to your, to your point, uh, storage and wells are totally different, storage and topography totally different, pumping and, uh, storage totally different.
Hey, Brian, uh, Bert from the police department here, just a quick question, when you talk about public safety and fire service, do you know, are any of our wells on backup generators, or are they just standalone on the existing grid throughout the village?
Uh, they have the ability for backup, uh, but I don't believe any of them have permanent generators, so you could, uh, do a couple things, the, uh, bring a trailer-mounted generator and plug it in there, uh, and I think, I believe your well two, the one off Twelfth Avenue, also has a auxiliary drive, where you could bring it, an engine and, um, a motor, you know, tractor, uh, and, and hook it up that way.
Okay, thank you, you answered my question, thank you.
Uh, this is Peggy, um, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to ask this question, but since we're talking about water usage and, uh, the fact that we're at a tipping point, according to the chart, uh, the PSC annual report, why is it that our water, um, let's see, our water usage in our average per capita per day, why is that going down?
There's a few reasons for that, uh, uh, that, that could be. Uh, we often see, uh, particularly in the last ten to fifteen years, where low-flow fixtures have become more available, um, and lower cost, that folks, as a showerhead or a toilet needs to be replaced, they simply put in those low-flow fixtures and, and, and they do make a difference, uh, particularly if that happens a hundred or two-hundred, three-hundred times. Another phenomenon we see is pricing, uh, like a lot of economies, the supply and demand uh, effect is visible here, uh, as rates increase, we generally see people get a little more careful with how much water they use, uh, just kind of a subconscious, uh, decision that, you know, they're not gonna let the kids let the faucet run when they brush their teeth, and, and those little things certainly do add up. Uh, lastly, it can be impacted by, uh, and if, if folks can see my screen here, this non-revenue water item, and you can see that over time that has been going down, which is great, uh, but non-revenue water would be water that's pumped out of the ground but not sold. And that can be things like a water main break, uh, that can, you know, those can blow a thousand gallons a minute right down the sewer without ever going through a meter, so that's called, that's that water lost. It could be folks that are, uh, you know, leave a garden hose running, those sorts of things, that, that shows up on their bill, but, uh, still adds to this per capita. You also have, um, I'll just hop into this, um, you also have a lot of industrial use for a community of your size, so, um, generally what we're, what we would typically see is a, a water pumped, pumped per day of, you know, a hundred and twenty or something gallons that, per day, per person. And, and you guys have, have quite a bit, so, uh, I'll get into that in the study and how we're gonna try to isolate that from an industrial to a population growth, uh, in just a second. But hopefully that answers the question about why that's going down.
Yes, thank you.
So the, um, the study that we're undertaking, we wanted to reexamine the assumptions, projections that the village made uh, back in two thousand and three, and just confirm they were still good. Uh, a lot happens in twenty years, you know, both in just the way society works and costs, of course, as well. So, um, first thing we looked at was the two thousand and three study, and what assumptions they made, we made, um, with the village at the time, based on actual use, so that study looked at five years worth, nineteen ninety-eight through two thousand and two, and we came up with an average pumpage per day of two-hundred-and-seven gallons, two-hundred-and-seven-thousand gallons per day. And using your population at the time, you were pumping about a hundred, hundred gallons of air per person in two thousand and three. Uh, looking at modern usage, that has gone up considerably. And we, we're surmising that that is largely due to the industrial growth in town. Uh, that's adding to the water demands of the system while not tremendously increasing population growth. So some of the things that we're assuming- So some of the things that were assumed in two thousand and three. Are the starting points of, you know, how much, how many gallons per day per person should you be figuring on? Was a hundred and ninety-one, now we're at two hundred and thirteen. For a maximum day, the, the most intense water use day of each year. Those are generally going to be in the summer month where people are watering their lawns, filling swimming pools or refilling swimming pools, those sorts of things. And an average pumping per day. Now of a hundred and twenty-two gallons per person per day. So we're, uh, on a per capita basis, you are using more water per day, both on an average. And a maximum. Then we looked at how many people you have. Um, so that we could get an idea of, of at least where the future's heading and, and try to. Project based on those growth rates. This chart shows a number of data sources in orange is the US Census data. The gray line here. Our Department of Administration estimates, they do per population estimates each year. They use different data than the census does, so you can see, uh. State of Wisconsin thinks you're at about twenty-one eighty-five, the federal government thinks you're at about twenty-two sixty-six as far as population. DOA also does projections, uh, where they'll look at a community's growth history. And try to look forward a number of years, that's this blue line. And the last dotted line is just a straight up. Projection of if you've, your census data tracks in the way it has for the last fifty years, what will it look like in another fifty years? This doesn't quite tell the whole story, uh, because of a few things, right now. Your population growth is somewhat limited by the valley. Um, new home construction. Is somewhat limited by the, the available ground, the biggest chunks of available land are at the. The west and east tops of the valleys. So there is a, a chance that. This linear projection either just flattens out. Because of the potential cost of either for Valtel building their own booster station. Or participating in some of the reservoir costs, or. Goes higher because. The inverse happens, they decide that the, the dollars are there and the opportunity is just right to, to in fact pull the trigger on those like it was back in oh six, oh seven. For our purposes. Um, we always try to be conservative, if you're going to, are going to build a new reservoir. We really want to look forty, fifty years out and make sure that we're erring on the side of, of growth. In a responsible way, uh, so that you don't get twenty years out and your reservoir is not big enough again. So we took, um. Those figures and again compared things to the two thousand and three study, uh, not. Not so much to, to reinvent the wheel as much as, as we check those assumptions in oh three. In two thousand and three. Because of some of those unknowns that we talked about is, is what's throttling growth and what would accelerate growth. The village had decided to shoot for a, a future. Population of four thousand. Which, uh, if you look at that growth chart, you know, is more than, more than the three thousand that you would, would get. But the feeling at that time was that four thousand would, would be the target. Well beyond a, a normal forty-year planning horizon. So for the moment, uh, we had also assumed four thousand, which again is, is on that conservative side of high number of people. And we filled in a few items, uh, this average per day pumping rate. The maximum per day pumping rate. Converted that to your total average day. Typical day demand in gallons, your maximum day demand in gallons. And then just listed out your effective storage, you may recall that, uh, your existing tank is three hundred thousand gallons. Uh, but not all of it can be used, uh, the way the tank creates pressure is just gravity. The very, very high piece cannot be used because that's the overflow area. The very, very bottom portion of the tank is not used because it's not effective because it's not high enough to provide. The right type of pressure for your booster, so you have effective about two hundred and forty thousand gallons. So these. Figures here are, are where you're at today in twenty twenty-two. Compared to where you were in two thousand and three, and again, just to hit the highlights, you are. Pumping more water per person per day, both on an average day and the max day. The system is seeing a demand, a daily average demand of three hundred sixteen thousand gallons. Of water on a typical day in twenty twenty-two. That's quite a bit higher than, uh, you were at two hundred twenty-four thousand back in twenty twenty-three. Still well below the projected future. That is contemplated on that previous study. But then we go into, uh, kind of an analysis mode. And that's what these next boxes represent are, are seven different ways the industry looks at. Ways to answer the question, do we have enough storage? And, and that's a bit of a loaded question, uh. Because it depends on a number of assumptions. Both on what is going to be your biggest day of the year, both on. What is going to happen, what are they going to be the conditions when you have a fire? You know, will all the wells be in service, will your biggest well happen to be out of service because it's just getting its. Every ten years thorough cleaning, uh, will it be a, kind of a disaster day? Where there's no power and a fire, and the generators cannot get. To those, to the wells to turn them on again. So we look at all seven of those and a red means. You're, you're past it, uh, either by a gallon or by a hundred thousand, several hundred thousand gallons. So just by way of comparison, the first method to look at is. Does your storage tank equal your average day demand, and in two thousand and three. Your average day demand is two hundred twenty-four thousand, your tank has an effective storage of two forty. So then you got a white, white box there. In twenty twenty-two, your average day has gone up to three hundred sixteen thousand, that's higher than the tank. Of two hundred thirty, two hundred forty thousand, so that's a red. Some of these other methods are, are just different permutations and combinations of, of fire events. You know, will, will you have a fire, method one is, are you going to have a fire on the max day use of the summer? When your biggest well's out of service, method two would be. Are you going to have a fire during morning shower time or evening dinner time, those hours? Shower, the shower hour and the dinner hour are your heaviest uses during that average day. Method three is what was selected as, as the evaluation method of choice in two thousand and three. That would be your maximum day. With your firm well capacity and you have standby power, we talked a little bit about standby power for the wells. These other ones. Are, uh, just different ways of looking at the same question, but um. In two thousand and three, you had two, two whites and, and five reds. In twenty twenty-two, you, you're seven for seven on reds, so, uh, our. Our anticipated recommendation for the twenty twenty-two study would. Would be again, that in fact, you do not have enough storage. For these seven evaluation methods for a public water supply. Now you have had, and Joe talked about this a little bit last month, you have had fires. Um, big fires that, uh, the village had to support. And you were able to get through those events because all three of your wells were running. And of course, these, these scenarios anticipate a time where on any given ten-year period. Each one of your wells will be out of service on purpose for two to three months for cleaning. Uh, and let alone if, if one of them just broke a lightning strike, something like that. So there's certainly can, some conservancy intentionally built into these evaluation criteria. But, uh, we are, are looking at a point where. You're, you're at red on all these boxes. Uh, one other thing we've talked about at some of the previous meetings is. You know, this question of, well, should have, should have the, the village just built a, a reservoir in two thousand and five. Or six or seven or eight or ten or whatever, uh, and, and that's also, uh, just like it is now, a bit of a loaded question. Uh, as you can see with these evaluation methods. Any, any one of which has some conservancies and risk in there, uh, some pretty decent assumptions. Especially when it went to the future. And. Any specific one project, a single house or a single subdivision that has twenty houses or fifty houses. Uh, rarely is. Is it the fault of that project to tip you over the edge, it's, it's more of this. Gray area of a system is just getting to be enough risk. That it becomes a better and better and better idea to address that. And then when you're going to do that, look into the future forty years and do our best job of looking at the crystal ball. Uh, and the village has done that as notable developments have occurred. Uh, the, the last of which would have been the brewery. Would be the, the other, you know, long, large facility that, that could have an impact on a potential fire. Uh, the decision at, at that time for a number of reasons was, was still, well, we're not quite close enough to pull the trigger. Uh, but, but at this point, um. We, we do, uh, we are coming to a conclusion that we, we do recommend. An additional reservoir is necessary. So, um, where we're at with the, the report is, uh, we've got about. Uh, another week or ten days to, to get that ready for staff review of all the nitty gritty assumptions. Uh, make additional changes as needed, and then we'd come back to this body for. Review of the final product or draft final product. Once that has been ironed out, the village's financial consultants would take that information. And convert it into an updated impact fee. The impact fees themselves are also a bit of an exercise in. Predicting the future. As you can see from this chart. Um, a decent chunk of the reason we're recommending additional reservoir, additional storage. Is because the existing system could use some help, uh, with, uh, fire protection when. It's either the max day or one of your wells is out of service. However, if you're going to build a tank, it makes tons of sense, and in fact, DNR and PSC are will require. A community to build it not just for today, but for decades beyond, and we usually look forty, fifty years out. Which also increases the cost of a project, uh, so the impact fee is intended to capture and. Represent that balanced benefit, if you will, where. The existing ratepayers. Pay for the portion of the project that benefits the existing folks. And that new folks pay for that incremental cost of, of oversizing. If you will, the reservoir to account for future growth. And that's based purely on water meter, new water meters, new water meter size, which is how your old. Impact fee was calculated. Uh, that effort, uh, again, as, as mentioned, is done by, by your financial consultants. And does get reviewed by PSC, so it, it does take a little bit of time, uh, for those things to happen. In addition, I. A new storage tank. Takes a little bit of time for DNR and PSC to review and approve the construction effort. So, uh, partly because the school is, is certainly at a point where they'd like to keep their project going. And there's a desire on the village part to minimize. The time period between opening day of the new school and opening day of a, a new tank to, to create. This new storage. Tonight, we've got a proposal, uh, Drake asked us to bring a preliminary design proposal to you all. So that that could go in parallel with the impact fee, uh, it's generally all of twenty-four months and some. From the decision to proceed with a new reservoir or new well. A new, a new big water purchase. To both get it designed and get it approved independently by a public service commission and DNR. Uh, DNR wants to make sure it's designed properly and PSC wants to make sure that it's not. Unduly impacting existing ratepayers at the benefit of future ratepayers. And both of those folks have independent, parallel review processes that, that can generally take. Uh, many months, so. With that, I will, uh. First release it down and, uh. Take any questions from the group?
Okay, thank you a lot, Brian, um, does anyone have any questions to Brian then? Okay, here are not none, then we'll move on to item B. Consideration discussion proposed by Town Country Engineer for Preliminary Design of Water Storage Facility.
Um, the, the proposal is included in your packet, uh, the fee is forty-four thousand dollars. That fee can be reimbursed to the, or the, th- those cost, that cost can be. And most likely will be reimbursed, uh, to the, the village when we take out our, our loan from either a state agency. Or a federal agency at low interest to pay for this, um, so the utility does have the funds to cover it, um. But that cash outlay will, we anticipate being reimbursed from the eventual borrow, uh, to fund the construction of a water storage facility. Um, obviously Brian is here, if anyone has any questions of the, um, the proposal, but this is. Uh, what it would take to get, to, to kick off, um, the, um, a construction of a. The future construction of a water tower.
So Brian, I, as I, as I recall from earlier conversations, we would be looking at putting it on the. East side of town and we would be looking at building a similar facility to what we already have on the west side of town. So like a similar reservoir styling because of, we could put it in the height area.
That's correct, yeah, there's a lot of. That's correct. Yeah, there's a lot of benefit to having two uh I call moderately sized reservoirs as opposed to one mega reservoir uh for a lot of the redundancy things we've been talking about. That the existing reservoir and and a new one will eventually need repair, painting, uh those sorts of things. And during those times, that has to go out of service. So to have two really opens up a lot of flexibility for future maintenance or on a disaster or something that could happen. Uh as far as elevation, yes, uh it would be also beneficial to have that at 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 least the I'll call this big ball of water at the same elevation on both sides of the valley, uh because then it 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 equalizes your pressure throughout your system. The pressure in the what I'll call unboosted areas is is purely a function of elevation. So um back in two thousand six uh that Valtell development had gotten far enough that they'd already circled a piece of land on their mapping for their development that of course never happened. Uh so that would be certainly one of the potential sites. Uh we have to reach out to them and see if they're still interested. Uh anywhere else, we'd still want to create enough elevation on that reservoir so that it's at the same elevation as across the the valley. So we look at a couple of different spots. Uh the big differences between spots would be is it at the right ground elevation? Would we need to make it a ball on a stick, you know, uh kind of what Verona's got? Uh or how much what's called connecting main, uh we'll have to connect this tank to the existing village system. So the closer it is to the system as the crow flies, the lower project cost. So we'd be looking at a number of sites, each with different elevations and horizontal locations to to help minimize cost.
And again, that would be separate from a pumping station. So for example, if we built it on the uh east side and they still wanted to, you know, build houses at a higher elevation, there would still need to be another pumping station, correct?
That's a great point. Yes, uh they would they would need to do that. Um in that case, that would be a little bit of a cleaner operation because the pumping station would would only benefit them. There'd be no benefit to the existing village for building a pumping station on the east east valley ridge. Uh that would just serve the Valtell folks. So that would be uh was contemplated in oh six and I would echo that now. That that any such pumping station would be a simpler, that'd be the developers to decide to build or not.
And then what about on the uh west side? Um that you said the school slid their their project down the hill so they wouldn't have to pump. But the current pumping station that's there wasn't going to be able to service um anymore people, or I was confused by that too?
Yes, um it it the existing pumping station that the village owns uh on the west side is not large enough to serve an entirely additional development. Uh it is big enough to you know, to get I'd say roughly fifteen more houses on it. But it is not, it's not big enough for a subdivision like New Chetel was contemplated as. So uh while that's not part of this report, um it it's that booster station is something that the village will need to keep on its radar. Uh it's a like all the rest of the infrastructure, it's it's something that will eventually just need to be replaced. And when that day comes, uh you'll have, well, very similar discussions on, well, do you want to replace it exactly? Or do you want to replace it with something that could contemplate more growth on the west west rim? But uh for for now, it's it's all on its own and we don't really have any not nearly as much interest in developing on the west ridge as we do on the east.
Are there any more questions of Brian? Otherwise, we made a motion to approve the preliminary design for the water storage facility.
This is Chuck. I'll I'll move to uh to approve the uh the uh items listed in the memorandum that we have uh for the preliminary design of the new water res- reservoir.
I'm Michael Bell. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Brian. Uh item C, consideration discussion, resolution twenty two dash zero six. Approving the agreement between the village and Ugliris and Ugliris area school district regarding payment of water utility impact fee. Drake?
Uh the school district is proceeding with their plans for the construction of a new four K uh through second grade primary school. Uh the villages uh as just discussed is recommended that the village proceed with the construction of a water storage facility in conjunction with any significant new development. Uh the village has begun the process of completing the public water facility needs assessment, which will inform the future design of an impact fee to ensure there is an equitable distribution of costs among existing and future users um for the water storage facility. Uh this agreement that's included in your packet stipulates that the school district agrees to pay the future impact fee as calculated and adopted in ordinance. So this would be the impact fee that is designed uh following the completion of the water needs assessment and the village's financial consultant designing a in an impact fee. And then that impact fee would then also be reviewed by uh the PSC and the PSC would sign off on it as an equitable distribution of costs uh between existing and future users. And then the village, following that approval, the village would adopt it into ordinance and it would be applied to new development on a water main size uh basis. So it uh it gets paid at time of uh build permit. Uh the only exception to that is in-state statute. It does allow a deferral of payment if it exceeds seventy five thousand dollars. That deferral is up to four years or six months prior to the beginning of construction of the facility, whichever is sooner. Um and so uh as we're anticipating building a water tower um and having it up and running with it all sometime over the next hopefully twenty four months, if all goes smoothly. Obviously, that deferral would be would be limited for anyone coming in uh that was seeking to develop. So that's the only that's the only time that a impact fee would not be paid at the uh issuance of the build permit.
Um this is Peggy. And at this point in time, I will be voting no on this resolution for a number of reasons. Um it's not that I am against the water facility, et cetera, but number one, our analysis is not complete. Number two, we are coming out of a closed session and this is on the agenda. The public has no information. Uh there's been no media. There's been no informational meeting, nothing. I mean, we've never even seen a plan of the school at the village board level. I mean, it's it's like I'm, I I I have no information. And the last was um the um well, I already guess I already told you, the analysis isn't complete. And then um no info has been to the villagers and we are coming out of a closed session and voting on something that has been in a closed session prior prior. So in my opinion, I will vote yes when I get my data, when the public knows and when we've had some publicity on it for the citizens. Thank you.
Well, with that being said, I guess um is there any further discussion or would somebody like to make a motion on resolution twenty two dash zero six?
I I'm not really sure where to go with this. I I understand what you're saying, Peggy, I do, but I don't really see the point in um in delaying this. Um so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to accept resolution twenty two oh six.
We have a motion that we need a second. Is there a second out there?
So then can I amend my emotion that we will or mend my emo- I can't say what I'm trying to say. Amend my motion to bring this back uh to our next meeting after we've had more time.
You can withdraw your motion, withdraw your motion and make a uh motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be, if I'm understanding you correctly, the Tuesday, March first, village board meeting.
Okay, so I would I like to withdraw my previous motion and make a motion that we bring this back uh as an agenda item on uh March first.
I'm Michael Bell. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh there is no president's report. Is there anything else on the board? Hearing not, we are adjourned.